Meeting with Mia McCarthy presenting the 2021 State of the City Address. Mia McCarthy, the floor is yours.
Good evening. Council President Motivaren, Majority Leader Palamini, members of our city council. Thank you for the opportunity to address you tonight. I appreciate those who are watching us live via WebEx, YouTube, Open Stage Media, or may view this as a recorded meeting sometime in the future. Want to thank our department heads who do the day-to-day operations of the city and do a great job in delivering services to our community. A year ago, we were doing well. We had five years of tax cuts, significant economic development, and a stable financial outlook. Unfortunately, this year, we had to raise taxes slightly again to offset some of the effects of the pandemic that we're dealing with. But at the same time, we have seen a steady increase in the value of property in the city. As the impact of COVID-19 became better understood last March, I closed City Hall temporarily and shifted to an appointment-only format. Simultaneously, our city workforce continued to deliver essential services. Police, fire, EMS, waste collection, water, and sewer were delivered uninterrupted to our residents. We did then and still recommend people wear masks, wash their hands, and practice social distancing to minimize the spread of the virus while we wait for the vaccine to be made available to everyone. In this period, we have received some assistance from the federal government under the CARES Act, and we've used the CARES Act funding to provide rental assistance, rapid rehousing, emergency shelter, and homelessness prevention. Working with the Boys and Girls Club, the Hamilton Arts Center, SJTA, and the YMCA, we have provided support programs for our city's youth. Our affirmative action officer, Ron Gardner, in partnership with the Community Loan Fund, they've provided grants and technical assistance to 39 small businesses in Schenectady. This assistance has been vital to keeping the businesses open while dealing with the significant impact of COVID-19. 2020 was a difficult year financially for the city of Schenectady. We spent about $600,000 in unanticipated expenses due to COVID-19, which still has not been reimbursed in spite of promises from the federal government. Saw a significant drop in prior-year tax lien collections. State aid was reduced, casino revenue was down, and the interest on real property taxes will also reduce. To offset those shortfalls, I reduced non-personnel expenses by $2.1 million and imposed a hiring freeze, which has saved us approximately $1.9 million. And we issued a $7 million tax anticipation note. I remain hopeful that the federal government will provide assistance in the coming weeks, not only to Schenectady but other communities across New York State and across the country. I predict that we'll end 2020 with a deficit of a little over $8 million. Again, it was an extremely difficult year. In spite of the challenges and difficulties the pandemic has placed on our community, we're still moving ahead with environmental sustainability, housing rehab and development, and infrastructure investments. Our Rev Demonstration Project with National Grid continues to move ahead. The first phase in two zones is completed. The negotiations are finalized for the second phase to accomplish a full-city-wide deployment of the LED streetlight conversion and other smart city solution with video analytics and other information that will help us better manage and deliver city services. Our public Wi-Fi deployment neighborhoods has steadily increased during the past year with deployment of over 100 access points. And it's obvious from the data that you can see from this slide and that we're collecting how important it is to our residents. There were over a million webpage access since the end of March just for government and educational inquiries. It shows that people were using it for homeschooling and for work. We've had over 40,000 unique users in the period from June to December alone. And I remind residents of the interactive Wi-Fi map we have on our website to keep everyone posted on where we have this service and continue to look to expand it throughout the city. The LED streetlight conversion will save 50% of the electricity we use initially for street lighting, with greater savings in the future as we utilize the dimming function. I did a ribbon cutting this morning for 10 new EV charging points on Liberty Street. We now have 28 city-owned stations. And the ones that we have up and running have reduced greenhouse gas emissions by 44,000 kilograms of carbon. We've added 4.5 megawatts in solar generating capacity with our new solar arrays on Anthony Street and Sheltonham Avenue. That was done in conjunction with our partners at the county and their solar consortium. We continue to work toward a climate-smart community certification, having completed both the mandatory actions, including a greenhouse gas assessment. And you can see from the pie chart that just over 40% of our greenhouse gases come from our vehicle fleet. And our climate vulnerability and adaptation report is online from the city website. People should take the opportunity to view that. One example, the City Hall Window Rehab Project proved very efficient reducing energy usage and cost. When you look at 2019 and compare it to 2020, we were able to reduce our natural gas usage in City Hall by 15%, saving us over $4,500 in energy costs for the last year. It goes without saying that it also improved the working environment for our employees within City Hall. We initiated a new telemedicine platform with Ellis Hospital, MVP, CDPHP Healthcare, and United Concierge Medicine. Our paramedics now can perform telehealth consultations with UMC physicians remotely, avoiding costly trips to the emergency room. With 115 paramedics, the Schenectady Fire Department is the first and the largest department in the region to provide this service. The Schenectady Police Reform and Reinvention Collaborative was formed in accordance with the governor's executive order and is reviewing the police department's strategies, policies, and procedures. The work of the collaborative will culminate in a written plan for improvement that will foster trust, fairness, and address the issues of racial bias. Governor Cuomo recognized our newly-formed Hiring Advisory Panel, where community members meet with potential police recruits as part of the hiring process in his State of the State message last week. The collaborative has partnered with the John Finn Institute for Public Safety as an independent research firm to collect and analyze feedback. Additionally, they're coordinating a community survey on perceptions of the Schenectady Police Department. The survey is live today on the Schenectady website. And I encourage everyone in the city to take this survey and also make your family, business associates, neighbors aware of this so that they can also have the opportunity to put their input in. The Schenectady Police Department last year received the DCJS accreditation. The accreditation of the department shows that our department's policies, procedures, and operations meet the high standards of policing's best practices. I appointed retired appellate division Judge Gus Devine as Public Safety Commissioner to replace Mike Idens, who retired in November. I again thank Mike Idens for his service to the city and welcome Judge Devine onboard as part of our team. We've seen the value of property increase the last few years, as I pointed out earlier, so that our equalization rate this year came back to 100%. It was off as much as 23 percentage points in prior years. It's a significant shift. This is the result of blight removal, selling foreclosed property, working with potential homebuyers, and facilitating rehab and new construction. Last year, we demolished 34 blighted and dilapidated buildings in conjunction with the Capital Region Land Bank. This slide shows a property on Carey Street, where an old house was removed. And working with Habitat for Humanity, two new houses are now being built, one solely by veterans. Our city-owned property sales continue to be very successful in creating homeownership opportunities in our city. Since 2013, we have sold over 600 units of property. Even with the COVID-19 shutdown and restrictions on access to the courts and the county clerk's office, we sold 71 properties for just under $1 million. And we have 45 sales that have been approved by the city council that are pending with a value of $1.2 million. The Schenectady Housing Development Fund Corporation was able to help 11 first-time homebuyers in 2020. Mrs. Caldwell and her children are shown here with their new home on Anthony Street. And I and some other city staff had the opportunity to do a homes press conference there to announce their purchase and again to help market other opportunities throughout the city. These pictures in this slide show Renaissance Square and Eastern Avenue. This is 55 new affordable housing units converting an old school and nearby storefront with some new infill construction. It's really a transformational project there. These pictures show the continued housing development we're doing on Hamilton Hill. This is over 100,000 square feet of additional new construction of Albany and Craig Street. The first 89 units of reconstructed apartments at Yates Village are now complete and are being leased up. And I'm pleased to acknowledge the merger of the Community Land Trust in Better Neighborhoods into the new entity, The New Better Community Neighborhoods Incorporated. This merger was recently approved by the New York State Attorney General and the New York State Homes and Community Renewal Agency. I welcome Chad Kilborn as BCNI's new board president. This group will give us the vision and the structure to help revitalize neighborhoods the way Metroplex has helped downtown. And this has taken over a year to make this happen, but it is truly a significant move within our development operations within the city. The pandemic may have slowed, but has not stopped projects downtown. The Mill Artisan District continues to be developed. Renovation of the old Trusco headquarters is underway. The demolition and construction at 501 State Street. We've got 40,000 square feet of addition that's going on the YWCA. The long-overdue rehab of the old Gazette Press Building on North Broadway. The rehab of the former OTB headquarters in Clinton and Smith Street. And the gut rehab of the building at J and Franklin Street. It's approximately 375,000 square feet of rehab and new construction that continues to happen in downtown. Our Department of Development has put forth again our five-year consolidated plan, which continues to focus on housing, economic, and workforce development in strengthening our neighborhoods. Our new 2021 application process will require proposals to demonstrate how HUD funds will meet these goals and encourage organizations within our community to collaborate. We'll continue to focus on the NRSA in Hamilton Hill neighborhood and the Mount Pleasant renewal area. We're close to implementing an online permitting program of code enforcement called City Square. The applications there will be done online, will be routed, tracked, and approved, managed in a faster and more efficient way, and again, just overall bring a seamless delivery of service to that department. I thought our Orchard Park improvements would be completed in 2020. Unfortunately, COVID slowed that down. We did start some of the site work there in spite of COVID-19, but this year, we'll complete the walkway, add the playground equipment. The lighting and picnic tables will be placed there. Again, truly a transformational project right off Crane Street. This winter and last season, the first storms were the largest and record-breaking. We have to remember that in 2008, we had 60 individuals on the payroll to respond to a snowstorm. Last month, we had 29 people on the payroll. We've become far more efficient and better managed over the last 15 years. But the city has always relied on private contractors to help with major projects and weather events. Over the next several months, I look forward to working with the council to better define an outline when and where we bring in outside contractors to help our operations. Some of the significant projects from 2020 were the City Hall roof replacement, the Rose Garden stairs. We did structural repairs to the Congress Street Bridge, renovations to Fire Station 3, reconstruction of the DeCamp Avenue, the lighting of the Erie Boulevard rail bridge, our North Ferry Street pump station and the related Forest Main to Anthony Street. The construction continues at the city's water resource and recovery facility and the North Ferry Street pump station. This is the largest project undertaken since I've been mayor. It's very impressive, has a significant impact for future economic development and the quality of life within our community and adjacent villages and towns here. I encourage people to go down and look at it. Get your picture in front of it, call me up. I'd be more than happy to go down and have my picture taken with you. Because as it's finished, it's all below ground. It's going to be covered over with dirt and landscape, and nobody's going to even know it's there. Again, we've finished the 13,000 feet of 36-inch Forest Main, which runs from this pump station to our treatment facility on Anthony Street. And I anticipate the biowaste paralysis solutions will be operational at that facility, again adding to our efficiency and sustainability later part of this spring. We're looking to do approximately $15 million in infrastructure projects in 2021. Our 2021 street paving program, improvements to Brandywine Avenue at 890 over to State Street, Broadway pavement preservation from Weaver Street up to Fourth Street. The long-awaited stormline installation at Lancaster, Wyoming and Grenecide will be completed this year. We'll do the improvements at the Knott-Wendell and Rosa intersection, the Knott-McClone signal improvements. In the Craig Street, complete streets reconstruction design work will be done this fall. We'll be implementing safety and walkability into downtown. We're going to do eight intersections there, including Franklin and Clinton Street. And we'll do the reconstruction of South Church Street between State Street and Fuller Street. Also, the King's Road Bridge, the design work's been done there, and that's moving ahead. We'll also look to do the Francis Avenue Bridge deck replacement. Again, those two projects are just under $7 million worth of work. I want to thank all of our city employees who have risen to the challenge put on us by the pandemic, especially our police, fire, and bureau of service who provide emergency and vital services to our residents. We held a very successful citywide holiday parade in December to acknowledge their work and bring a little holiday spirit to our neighborhoods. And I look forward to working with the council and our downtown businesses as we start to plan the 2021 holiday parade, which hopefully will be back in a normal format and run its usual route downtown. Again, I want to thank the city staff for the work they did last year and continue to do now. 2020 was a difficult year on many fronts, but better days are ahead. And Schenectady has a bright future. And you can remember, it's almost spring. But with that, we're predicted to get a little bit of snow tomorrow, so I remind you that if we get over three inches of snow, all vehicles have to be removed off our priority streets. And that if you have a fire hydrant in front of your house or your neighbors, take one shovel on each side of it just to make sure that there's access for the fire department should unlikely event happen. With that, Mr. President, I've made this more of abbreviated this year in light of the format we're operating under. But I do thank you for the opportunity to talk to you tonight. Look forward to working with you throughout this year. Wish everyone stay safe and enjoy the rest of the evening.
Thank you, Mia McCarthy, for sharing your 2021 State of the City Address with us. We'll pause for a few minutes, and then we'll get into our regular city council meeting. Good evening once again. We'd like to call the city caucus meeting to Arda from Monday, January 25, 2021. We have 16 items for consideration this evening. If the clerk can please read item number one.
Item number one for original consideration. Resolution calling for a public hearing for the redirection of Barrett and Huron Streets between South Avenue to Park Place from a one-way street to a two-way street.
Discussing committee without objection or consent. Item number two, if the clerk could please read.
Item number two for original consideration. A resolution calling for a public hearing for the redirection of South Church Street, State Street to Fuller Street, from a two-way street to a one-way street as part of the reconstruction of South Church Street.
Discussing committee without objection or consent. Item number three, if the clerk can please read.
Item number three for original consideration. A resolution authorizing the mayor or his designate to enter into supplement agreement number two with New York State Department of Transportation for a detailed design fund to be paid to Amtrak Railroad for the bridge reconstruction project on King's Road over FSX Amtrak.
Discussing committee without objection or consent. Item number four, if the clerk can please read.
Item number four for original consideration. A resolution authorizing an agreement to reimburse Schenectady County for work performed on behalf of the City of Schenectady Police Department.
Discussing committee without objection or consent. Item number five, if the clerk can please read.
Item number five for original consideration. A resolution authorizing the issuance of revocable permit number 657 to Dave Gourmet Burgers and more for a sign that will overhang the city's right-of-way at 16 Edison Avenue.
Discussing committee without objection or consent. Item number six, if the clerk can please read.
Item number six for original consideration. A resolution authorizing the sale of 19 Nassau Avenue.
Discussing committee without objection or consent. Item number seven, if the clerk can please read.
Item number seven for original consideration. A resolution authorizing the sale of 21 Hewlett Street.
Discussing committee without objection or consent. Item number eight, if the clerk can please read.
Item number eight for original consideration. A resolution authorizing the sale of 418 Schenectady Street.
Discussing committee without objection or consent. Item number nine, if the clerk can please read.
Item number nine for original consideration. A resolution authorizing the sale of 526 Page Street.
Discussing committee without objection or consent. Item number 10, if the clerk can please read.
Item number 10 for original consideration. A resolution authorizing the sale of 931 Delamont Avenue.
Discussing committee without objection or consent. Item number 11, if the clerk can please read.
Item number 11 for original consideration. A resolution authorizing the sale of 1101 Parkwood Boulevard.
Discussing committee without objection or consent. Item number 12, if the clerk can please read.
Item number 12 for original consideration. A resolution authorizing the sale of 1219 Sumner Avenue.
Discussing committee without objection or consent. Item number 13, if the clerk can please read.
Item number 13 for original consideration. A resolution authorizing the sale of 1744 Albany Street.
Discussing committee without objection or consent. Item number 14, if the clerk can please read.
Item number 14 for original consideration. A resolution authorizing the sale of 2155 Broadway.
Discussing committee without objection or consent. Item number 15, if the clerk can please read.
Item number 15 for original consideration. A resolution authorizing the city of Schenectady to settle tax surcharge with David Dalton for 1076 University Place.
Discussing committee without objection or consent. Item number 16, if the clerk can please read.
Item number 16, under contract and supply. A resolution accepting the bid and awarding the contract for the purchase of hydrofluoric silic acid 2021 for the water department.
Discussing committee without objection or consent. If there's nothing more to come before the city comes to caucus, I would like to ask for a motion to adjourn. Motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. I would like to call the City Council Meeting to order from Monday, January 25, 2021, and I would like to call Ms. Porterfield for prayer invocation.
Gracious and loving God, we give you thanks for this new day. God, we pray for every leader in Schenectady, New York, as well as Washington, D.C. Lord, we pray that you will humble the hearts of us as government leaders, Lord, and that we would seek and fear you above all that we do and seek your advice on important issues of the day that we have to handle. God, we pray for the dedicated people that also are on the staff and for those of us who have been elected, God. We ask that you will use all of our minds and hearts to further the work that you put for our hands before our hands to do for our city and our country. God, we ask for an awakened spirit and renewed focus and energy for service and begin in all of us acts of justice and mercy, just as justice and mercy have been shown in the past. These are all blessings we ask in your name.
Thank you. I would like to call Ms. Patrick to lead the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. Ms. Michael, can you please complete the roll call?
Yes. Ms. Porterfield?
Here.
Ms. Deluski-Ralzunis?
Absent.
Ms. Patrick?
Here.
Mr. Palamini?
Here.
Mr. Mutiveren?
Present.
Thank you.
Approval of the minute for January 11, 2021. We have a motion.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Ms. Michael, do you have any communication on or petitions?
Yes. Communications presented to the City Council from Monday, January 25, 2021. Under official, there were none. Under general, from Betty Johnson, a letter stating that she does not want chickens in her building and asking for a halt to the chicken movement. Then there was an anonymous letter from a resident of the Mount Pleasant neighborhood to the mayor, police chief, and city council about the traffic nightmare on Ostrander and Crane Street. Under petition, there were none.
Thank you. Committee reports from my colleagues. Please unmute yourself. Seeing none, we'll move on to privilege of the floor related to legislative agenda. Ms. Michael, were there any submissions from the public in regards to privilege of the floor on legislative agenda?
No, there were not.
Thank you. Are there anyone who would like to speak on this legislative agenda portion? Seeing none, I declare this portion closed. Approval of the legislative consent agenda. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We'll move into privilege of the floor regarding general city business. Ms. Michael, were there any submissions for the privilege of floor in regards to city business?
No, there were none.
Are there anyone in attendance who would like to speak on this portion? Seeing none, I declare this portion closed. Miscellaneous business of the council, my colleagues. Please unmute yourself.
Mr. Mutiveren?
Go ahead, Ms. Porterfield.
Thank you. I just want to thank the mayor for the State of the City address tonight. I know that, you know, we had a tough year. We may have some challenging times ahead of us. However, I think working together and seeking and hopefully being very successful in getting the support that we need from the federal government, we can move forward to do even better things than has gone on so far. So congratulations to everyone who is doing the various projects within the city, and glad to see there's been inclusiveness of small businesses because truly small businesses are the strength of most communities these days. So I'm looking forward to a year of just more increase and looking forward to be able to work together with that. Thank you, Mr. Mutiveren.
Thank you, Ms. Porterfield.
Mr. Mutiveren?
Go ahead, Ms. Patrick.
Like Ms. Porterfield, I'd like to thank the mayor for his State of the City tonight and for all the work that he and the team, his staff team, have done. It was an incredibly challenging year, and when you look at all those accomplishments that the mayor discussed, you really have to give a lot of credit to him and his team at City Hall because they really pulled through during some very, very, very challenging times. So I'm looking forward to this upcoming year and working together with my colleagues. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Patrick.
Mr. Mutiveren?
Go ahead, Mr. Palamini.
I'd also like to thank the mayor for his State of the City, as has been said multiple times already. This is quite a challenging year, but thankfully, our staff, city staff, has really stepped up in a big way, having overcome many obstacles, in particular, our police and fire department and our general services with the garbage crew and our water and sewer. Without them, we would not exist as a city, and we're fortunate to have them, and thankfully, largely, they have been healthy, and we're grateful for that and thank them for their tremendous efforts as well as other city staff. We have some challenges coming forward. Hopefully, the federal government comes to some sort of compromise and federal funding and assistance will be sent to the city to help us overcome the deficit that was largely not any issue of what the council or the mayor has done. It was out of our hands with the virus and having various economic shutdowns, and the Congress really needs to come to a compromise and get this passed. So I would continue to urge our residents to contact their members of Congress to try to get this passed. You know, right now, it's still iffy as to whether assistance for municipalities will be granted, and this is something that, you know, we're not on a state or federal level where, you know, on the federal level, we can print money. We certainly aren't in that situation, and, you know, the government needs to step up, and hopefully, they will. So please contact your Congress representatives. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Palamini. Mia McCarthy?
Mr. President, thank council members for their kind words. Again, I want everyone to stay safe, appreciate what you do, and look forward to working with you in the coming year.
Thank you. Like my colleagues, I too would like to thank the mayor for the State of the City presentation. There's a lot ahead of us that we need to work together so that we can continue to move the city forward in a positive direction. I mean, we're hoping and praying that the federal government can provide the necessary funding that is needed to help us with our deficit, and we're hoping that, you know, things can progress smoothly out there. And it goes to the staff. I want to thank the staff, the city staff, for all they've done during the year, the last year, and continue to be doing for us. I know it's a difficult road, but we're going to work together and to achieve a positive outcome in the year 2021. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Stay well and good evening, everyone.
Good evening. Good night.